Device two, now recording.
So now we have an awkward two minutes of silence while we wait to start the meeting. Well, should we say the Pledge of Allegiance again for the benefit of those who just arrived? Start this one off.
That's instruction.
Those of you that just came in, if you would like to speak this evening, please do fill out one of those little forums at the podium and just put your name on it and and we will call on you to speak. We'll have some time to ask questions later on. Or make comments, either one. All right. Going to call this meeting to order and let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will call the role, if you would please, Ms. Messina.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Santiago.
Here.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallett.
Here.
Alderman Carretto Munoz.
Here.
Alderman Dimas.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout.
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Orano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Hey, we do have a forum. We called this special meeting to hear from staff about budget, about our revenue forecasts and to give you the opportunity to be involved in this process. As many of you know, we have some decisions to make regarding the grocery tax. As has been talked about before, which the 1% tax by the state of Illinois, which formerly went to the municipalities will end at the end of this year. That leaves a bit of a shortfall. And different ideas have been proposed. We thought it best to have a have an opportunity to get more of a big picture and out of our desire to be more transparent and have the community as involved as possible in this process. We're going to have a series of these kinds of meetings. We won't cover everything tonight. You'll notice that we're talking about general fund, not about water and sewer fund, for instance, that will be covered in another meeting. But we are going to try to have a series of these less formal discussions and opportunities for you to ask questions and interact with us. So with that said, thank you all for for being here and we are going to begin by asking our Director of Finance, Nikki, if you would please to come up and explain to us the numbers, the revenue forecast.
Thank you, Mayor Bobby, and happy to be for you tonight. All right, I'll try and talk up a little. Let me know if I start sliding back down because I probably am inclined to do that. Okay.
How's the volume for the the folks out there? Are you able to hear okay? Okay.
If she's loud enough.
All right. All right.
I'll try and yell it.
Yes, it sounds good. We won't take offense.
All right, if we need that, you guys let me know. Okay, so we're here to talk to you about the general fund revenues preliminary assessment starting tonight. So general fund being the main operating fund of the city, counting for revenue and expenses that aren't already earmarked for another fund. So you can look, thank you. So I'd like to start off by just telling you a little bit about where we're at now, mid through third quarter of the year. So we're estimating that we're going to end the year at $23,717,800. So that's about $66,200 over what we've originally budgeted for 2025, which was $23,651,600. So what that means to us so far is that our year and projected revenues are down about 24,000 from 2024 actual revenues.
So try to be more accurate next time.
Okay.
Extremely close. Thank you.
Got to be precise. Every penny counts. So I think we all agree that. So our 2025 revenues projections are on target all overall. There's a couple notable swings in individual sources as we're going to see in the next slide. So we have here before you somewhat of a condensed overview. Our individual general fund revenues, we probably have just short of 50 individual line items. That's a lot to go over. So we condensed them nicely just as part of our preliminary high level overview. So and we will be distributing the detailed breakdown of the categories, which I will go through as I'm talking to you. So if we start off with property taxes and we think about our real estate tax bills, they're generally issued in mid-May and they have you pay them in two installments, right? June and September. So so far we've received one of those two installments. Based on what we're seeing right now, it seems like we could potentially end with a 1% variance or a shortfall of just over $49,000. Keeping in mind that this will be a very easy number to firm up because in September we'll get our second distribution. And I really would anticipate there not to be a shortfall. I really would anticipate probably break even, maybe even a little bit more. Now, these next three categories, sales and local use and income and other taxes, which includes other taxes includes cannabis revenue. Now, these taxes are distributed to the state based on our population or our per capita. So per capita revenue estimates are provided by the Illinois Municipal League or the IML. And the 2025 revenue estimates from the IML range from $175.91 for the local distributive government distributive fund, which is income tax, down to $1.75 per capita for cannabis. And so if anybody has ever wondered in this example, why do we even get cannabis revenue? Well, that's because it's distributed to us by the state by per capita based on our population. Comes up to about $40,000 is what we're talking about. And the sales and use tax, that's combined to be about 10% over in our fiscal 2025 budget. That's mainly due to sales tax because there's an overall decrease in local use tax. And we're heavily reliant on sales tax with it being about 26% of our overall budget. So let's talk about local use tax. What is local use tax? Everybody started sales tax. Everybody's familiar with that context. But a simplistic view of what use tax is, is it is a form of sales tax, but it can't be assigned to any particular location within the state of Illinois. So think about goods that come over across state lines. And so those that's taxed at the generic 6.25%. And that money goes into a shared revenue pool and every community in Illinois gets a piece of that revenue based on per capita. Now, use taxes are down significantly and as of January 1st, 2025, there was a change made via public act to retailers who previously paid use taxes on sales sourced from outside Illinois now will be subject to the retailer's occupation tax, which that's sales tax to the locations where the goods are delivered. So now why this is important is because the IML projections for use are down based on that, but we ultimately will benefit from purchases that are shipped within the city's borders or delivered within the city's borders. So the new destination based requirements include locally imposed sales taxes, which means we'll now receive home rule sales tax on these purchases as well as some municipal sales tax base, not just on a per capita basis, but also where the sale and now delivery occurs. So next we have income taxes. We're trending toward an increase of about 167,500 or 4% over our original budgeted amount. It's pretty straightforward. It's based on the IML estimates. So let's go back to the other taxes category. So which we're looking at a decrease of about 4%. So in addition to cannabis, this category also includes our 2% amusement tax, our 2% package liquor tax, our municipal electric tax, that's COMED. And these three that I just mentioned have been traditionally stable revenue overall. So what's contributing to the 4% decline here is cable franchise fees and telecommunications fees. Kind of for the same reason. So as people cut the cable cord, they're not paying cable franchise fees anymore. And without, there are revenues that you can collect based on streaming that would kind of offset some of the some of that loss. So similar to communicate telecommunications tax, which is traditionally imposed on landlines. So not to oversimplify it, but there is a gradual erosion of telecom tax and revenue, particularly tied to the decline in landline use and which both of those are expected to continue. Both of those revenues are expected to continue to decline. So we get to our permits, license and registrations. The 183 $100 shortfall or 15% decrease in estimated compared to the amount originally budgeted is specifically tied to a decrease in building permit revenue. Building permit revenue, we originally budgeted 450K and to date we're at about 195,000. So it's a very conservative projection that we may bring in maybe another 10,000 by the end of the year, recognizing that we're kind of headed now into the end of the building permit season. For the most part, so this category is also tied to business registration, engineering and plan review fees, rental license, liquor licenses, most of those which are going to meet or beat expectations, but we couldn't overcome in the category of the loss in the building permit revenue. So we're going to be conservative with next year's estimates with building permit. Sometimes you think you're going to maybe have a bigger development on the horizon and for whatever reason it's delayed or it just doesn't happen. So we've had several good years in the past of very substantial building permit revenue. So it was a good estimate or a good forecast in 2024, looking at 2025, but we did come in short. And we're down to personal property replacement tax or PPRT, which you might ask, what is PPRT? Which PPRT is a tax, it's actually a tax on the net income of corporations, partnerships, trusts, public utilities, all at varying rates. So that's collected by the state and it's distributed to local task taxing districts, which that would be your cities, your counties, your schools, your libraries. And that decline that we're also expecting to continue, that's based on when net business income decline, if corporate profits decline, for example, your personal property tax replacement, personal property replacement tax is going to decline as well. As more businesses organize as pass through entities such as your LLCs or your S corps, that can tend to lead to lower replacement taxes than traditional corporations. And then if there's tax bill changes or changes in accounting methods that maybe could lead to increased refunds or credits that could decrease the PPRT. And then because public utilities are also subject to the PPRT, the volatility of those industries overall help contribute to the decrease. So we've we've estimated declines in the out years. So for 2026, we're looking at 172,000 projected revenue, 163,000 in 2027, 166 in 2028. It's just something that we're going to have to continue to monitor. So fines, everybody wants to talk about fines. The majority of the revenue in this category comes from the circuit clerk for motor vehicle violations other than parking tickets, probably $500,000 of that. Next in line would be police towing charges and then parking tickets and then fines related to both police and community development violations and the tickets issued to overweight trucks, which is a hot topic right now. The 14% increase in the category overall is due to better than expected circuit clerk clerk revenue, which is trending, I believe we budgeted at 500 and we're anticipating hopefully about 545,000. And then parking tickets and towing revenue also are trending to come in better than expected. So now we're looking at the scary negative 97% number for traffic signal enforcement. Now that's known as our red light cameras. The city has had red light cameras in place since 2008. In 2024, we budgeted $1 million and our actual was about 445,000 as the cameras were taken out of service about halfway through the year. Now in 2025, we budgeted 750,000 believing that IDOT would be restoring the cameras, which would restore revenue. Unfortunately, here we sit in mid mid-August with no information from IDOT as to when or if the cameras are going to be restored. So that's where the 95, 97% decrease comes from. The Daily Herald actually wrote an article about a year ago explaining the same situation because it's not specific to Illinois or not specific to West Chicago at all. So very good article. So now we're looking at our transfer station fees. Estimated about 6% increase. This is the revenue we collect from Groot associated with the waste transfer station. The amount collected is based on the total number of tons, which appears to be trending upward. And then there's also a CPI factored in. We also, the DuPage County and the Fire Department each receive a portion of this revenue, although the estimated up there is net of those payments. So interest. We're at $100,000 over our initial projections are because in part because our initial projection this time last year contemplated that the Federal Reserve would lower interest rates earlier than they actually did. So our experience there still tends to be good. So all of those other categories that I mentioned, everything I have already touched on, including police security services, revenue related to health insurance contributions from employees, brush collection, also from Groot, just general miscellaneous, it doesn't fit anywhere else calls here. So the 5% increase is due largely largely to employee contributions for health insurance. We expect to receive about 36% more than what was budgeted. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah. Does the 2025 property tax estimate include the addition of parole warrants or what? So we shouldn't see a bump because of that, correct?
Yes. So when we did our 2024 levy for 2025 collections, I'm not sure they were entirely built out at that time. So it may have only have been a portion. And so we may continue to receive the additional revenue for 2025 that will be for 2026 and going forward.
Right, okay.
Yes.
For the use taxes, is that like Amazon that you give?
Yes, that's the, that's a perfect example. Yes. Yeah, any anything like that, LTD commodities. It's down, it's down because they've restructured how they're assessing the tax and now because it's going to be based on where it's delivered to you. So if it's delivered to you in West Chicago and we're going to recoup a little bit of that, whereas a little bit more of that because of when you were just charged under the use, that went into just the big pot for all the communities in Illinois to share and that was based on per capita. Okay, so what would a PowerPoint be without a title? So it's pretty much just the summary of everything we just went over. Our other category, 7% property taxes at 21%, income taxes, those are all the same. Generally from what we originally started off with our budgeted numbers. Sales is up 2% from what was originally budgeted. Replacement is down 2%. Other taxes are down 2% from what was originally budgeted and permits, license and registrations down 1%.
One other question? Yes. The changes in the calculation of the use tax.
Yes.
To what degree was that reflected in what we're already seeing in the 2025 numbers?
The use tax went down about 59%, but the sales tax, which is a much bigger number, went up about 23%. So.
Did those changes go into effect at the beginning of 2025?
Yes. Keeping in mind that there is a little bit of the delay in how the retailers report the sales and then the state distributes it.
Thank you.
Think we can move past the pie chart? Okay, so here is just a visual of our 10-year sales tax trend. And you, one of the things I can point out to you is you can very, very clearly see where the home rule sales tax went into effect in 2023. This slide takes us through 2025 estimated, so it doesn't reflect the grocery tax decrease, but that's covered in a few slides ahead. A couple of things that I can point out is as we've gone through some of the sales tax discussions that pertain to home rule sales tax, we have discussed that there is still with the home rule sales tax, there are going to be certain categories that are not exempt to or are exempt from home rule sales tax groceries. We've talked about that prescription, non-prescription medicine, medical appliances, vehicle sales, farm and equipment parts, manufacturing, manufacturing equipment. Certain sales of titled or registered items, things like your trailers, your ATVs, things like that. Those are still going to be under municipal sales tax, but not and then just as a reminder, right now our home rule sales tax is earmarked for capital projects fund. So it is not a general fund revenue like municipal sales taxes. So moving on to the local government distributive fund, the LGVF, which is our income tax. You can see that the income tax has began to recover from the state clawbacks earlier in the decade. We projected fiscal 26 growth to be estimated about 5.9%. We did experience a state raid, for lack of a better word, on the local funds. The income tax in my mind, it could be just slightly potentially overstated just due to some prior year reallocations of that personal property replacement tax. The IDORV Illinois Department of Revenue did reallocate some of that. So we'll continue to measure and monitor where the IML revenue estimates come come in and we'll tweak that as necessary. So just a note. Sorry.
If I can just comment on that real quick and for the sake of everyone who's here, because I just learned this today and probably there are some that don't know. But originally in the 70s, if I'm not mistaken, the municipalities were promised that they would receive 10%. And over the years, the state took more and more away. And then that's where you see kind of in 17, it starts to turn the other way. The state started giving us a little bit more back towards that. And we are now at what, what was the number you said?
6.16.
6.16%. So that's kind of why that does that.
Yes, that is exactly why. Now, this is a topic of discussion has been for the last several years. Our community partnership organizations like the DuPage Mayors and Management Conference, the Illinois Municipal League, they are working very hard to have this restored back to the 10%. If anybody asks you to take a bet on if they really will do that, I would not take that bet. Okay, so short-term interest rates. Yes, so the Illinois funds has done a very good job of maintaining or exceeding the the federal interest rate. So that's, as we discussed, led to a great bump in our revenue. Not likely to continue, but we enjoyed it while we could. In August, the Illinois funds rates are hovering in the 4.4%. Our July administrative Illinois funds account, we recouped about 55,000 just from that one account alone. So Illinois funds is a very common investment pool for anyone that doesn't know for local communities such as ours, and they have continually outperformed other local government investment funds. They're very proud of that. They're of course publicly assured they can ensure they can buy with the Illinois Public Funds Investment Act and this has led to a good benefit for us. Okay, one thing that I did just want to touch briefly on before we move to 2026 revenue economic estimates is the is the fund balance in the general fund. And just a little history on our fund balance for general fund is in April 1999 and again in 2021, city council has reinforced that the desire to keep our fund balance at 30 and then 35% of our expenditures. Now, this is a recommendation based on a consistent recommendation based on different auditors over the years. Now, the 35% represents roughly four to five months of spending capacity. And the key reasons for this are emergency preparedness. We're talking natural disasters, your economic downturns, unexpected infrastructure failures, unexpected revenue, shortfalls or delay. I remember a time when the state got very behind in distributing the income tax payments to the city with 35% reserves. It ensures the city can respond without cutting services or borrowing. Or if and when we need to borrow a 35% fund balance, we can achieve a higher credit rating and that should equal lower interest. For those of you that were on the council during the economic downturn of maybe 2008, 2009, you may remember some of our neighboring communities such as Wheaton and Carroll Stream, they were laying off people. We did not have any service or personal reductions in part because we had the revenue or the reserves to overcome the shortfall at that time. So things turned around. So.
Just to clarify that 35% is that of the general fund?
It is. It is. So in September of 2023, with the new community park design nearing completion, staff was tasked with recommending Staff was tasked with recommending a plan, a plan for funding the various components for the community park over time. And the budget uh policy was updated at that time to formalize earmarking the video gaming revenue into the community community park fund, and then specify that reserves in excess of the city's reserve policy be automatically transferred to the park fund via the audit process. And what via the audit process means is instead of having to go back and do a budget amendment or a transfer, we just said, once the audit is substantially complete, we're able to calculate that number. We're just going to go ahead and make that transfer at that time, though, and that's what we've been doing the last uh couple of years. Okay, so economic.
We follow up Nikki on that, um, what is that part? Fund balance at roughly these days?
Twenty twenty four, we were looking at over six million, six point three million.
Thank you.
And that included a transfer at that time, which was um one point four five million. Which was what our general fund balance was over thirty five percent. So as we move into the fifth school year twenty twenty six economic outlook, this is what we're monitoring right now. This is what may impact our forecast, this is what is on our radar, and we're continuing to actively pursue, seek, understand, stay on top of. It's going to be unemployment increasing, the impacts on consumer spending and local taxes. For twenty twenty six, we're protecting anywhere from four point five to maybe four point nine percent. We're monitoring how that consumer is spending, which is going to affect our sale tent projections. So if the twenty twenty six growth could potentially slow to one, one point seven percent. Uh, we see GP GDP slows, we're going to expect more modest revenue growth. Twenty twenty five, anywhere between one point six, one point nine percent. Twenty twenty six, maybe a little bit less, one eight percent to one point five percent. Recognizing inflation, it affects both the city's costs and the resident purchasing power. For twenty twenty five tariffs, state, you know, twenty twenty five stabilizing around two point seven, the tariffs could push that higher. So continuing to monitor. And it doesn't, anybody have any questions before we move on to what we're looking at for twenty twenty six revenues? If none? We will go on to our sad believer red light revenue, which is nil. So sadly, I will let you know that in the out years um for twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight. We've conservatively budgeted, you know, maybe two hundred fifty, five hundred thousand. But we're waiting to hear definitively from the state if and when these cameras are going to be brought back online. Are they or are they not? Just tell us so we know. Um, so, until then, that's sad little. Instead of making it go down below the. Okay, so twenty twenty six revenue projection and sales tax reflects the loss of the grocery tax. Tentatively proposed um just over six point one five million in general fund municipal sales tax for twenty twenty six. Hey, some of our twenty twenty six revenue projections include property taxes at five point five two five million, those state and local use taxes at almost six point two five million. Income taxes for million six hundred seventy two thousand five hundred, those other taxes at two million three hundred fifty six two hundred, permits, license, registrations, like I said, more conservatively budgeted at six hundred forty five thousand. Personal property taxes, I think I said earlier, we continue to reflect the decline that we anticipate. Twenty uh twenty twenty six would be a hundred and almost seventy two thousand. Funds, we're looking at nine hundred and eighty thousand, no traffic signal enforcement. Transfer station fees, very um kind of conservative estimate at eight hundred fifty thousand. And interest earned also down from earlier projections. But recognizing the interest rates were beginning to decrease, so we're looking at a hundred thousand there. And then all other, we're looking at about one point seven five million. For a total twenty twenty six budget of twenty three million five hundred eighty seven thousand. As it stands right now here today. Recognizing that um we will continue to firm up our our projections and uh our ending fiscal year twenty twenty five estimates. Yes.
So as far as the traffic signal enforcement, right? So you're waiting to hear back from the state to see if they're going to be put that on. But that's not to say that they won't take them back down next year when they do another construction build or whatever.
It's very possible, although I will just say that these cameras are at our main intersection, so we've had that main construction. So we necessarily anticipate another large scale project.
And it wouldn't be just uh construction, I mean, maintenance would account for it as well, right? They'd take it out of commission for a period of time, put it back on, but.
Yes.
If we take that out of the budget, I mean, is that the uh uh, over the next couple of years, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, a lot, that's what we're shortfall this year, right?
Correct.
Potentially, so, I mean, I I don't know if it'd be consider extra money if we were to have them, you know, working the entire free year, right?
It would.
Um, so is that an option?
We are at the mercy of I dot first and foremost. If I had information to share, I would be happy to share whatever the answer was, just so we know realistically. Is this, does it make sense to even budget two hundred fifty thousand in twenty twenty seven? But to your point, yes, if we budget zero in twenty twenty six and they miraculously come back online, that would just be a great windfall of revenue that we were not otherwise expecting. Good question, yes.
Uh, is the twenty twenty six proposed assuming uh a grocery tax?
It doesn't.
This is like assuming no grocery tax, no sales tax increase.
Correct, yes, you're one hundred percent correct, thank you for pointing that out.
So, again, just a summary and to clarify for everyone, so this is per budgeting purposes, conservative numbers, assuming that we don't do anything to replace the grocery tax. Assuming that we don't get any money from the red light cameras. Uh, but we have the mechanism that if we did have that windfall happen, then basically any money that we had um come in above that thirty five percent reserve would go as it stands right now to the future park.
Correct.
But.
Yes. Summed it up nicely.
And and I'm sorry, uh, what's the future park fund specifically?
Okay, so, yeah, near Pioneer Park, so we have like how many acres, twelve acres, fourteen acres? So this is a large scale park that's uh supposed to be constructed over many years. We do have a portion already that we're working on, and you'll see this in the the twenty twenty six proposed budget for the community park. We're budgeting about two million to proceed with the going to RFP and starting that process.
So is is it an option to not move forward with that project to allocate some of those funds to the shortfall that we have for the?
That's a two-pronged question in that we were awarded a two million dollar grant. We have not received it, but we were awarded that. Um, but to your other question about could we amend the budget policy to stop transferring all of that money? That could be done. All of the excess over thirty five percent, we could stop doing that.
And let me just say again, for the benefit of everyone here, that um uh, we really appreciate uh Nikki, you guys pulling these numbers together. We're very early on in our budgeting process compared to um usually at this point in the year, we wouldn't be giving public numbers out. And so kind of take that with a a little bit of a grain of salt, if you will, that that we are still going through. Some of those numbers may be adjusted uh as we go through the budgeting process. But we just wanted to give you the best of what we had at this point, so that um so that you could be involved in the process and and know what the issues are that we're needing to think through. And again, this came up in the context of the sales tax question. And most of the communities around, in terms of um my contact with the other mayors. Uh, uh, seems uh that the majority of them are going ahead and replacing the grocery tax with a um with a a a home rule grocery tax. Um, but we uh didn't want to just do that because in essence, it's kind of the the thing that everybody will notice the least. And so we wanted to um, we wanted to bring it uh to you as a community and and just kind of let you know that 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 question of the grocery tax has to be seen in this larger context of revenue projections and what we'll get into in a minute, which is uh, you know, uh requests from our different departments for funding and so forth. And so it's this whole big picture uh needs to be understood as the context of this question about uh whether or not we proceed with a grocery tax or a sales tax or any other kind of increase.
Yes, and to dovetail on that, if I didn't say it earlier, that some of these projections, as especially with our our state revenues, those are typically distributed in the middle of the month. So when we're talking sales and use taxes, income taxes, those are based on seven months right now. We haven't gotten August yet, so it's coming probably end of this week, probably tomorrow before we could have updated the slides. It didn't come today, um, but yeah, recognizing that we're looking at seven, seven months. And these numbers will definitely change as we do have actual numbers in place of estimates. But thank you. So touching on the twenty twenty six preliminary revenue and expense budget estimate. What we're looking at for estimated fiscal year twenty twenty six revenue right now is twenty three million five hundred eighty seven thousand. What we're preliminarily looking at right now for the proposed twenty twenty six budget is twenty three million five hundred eighty five thousand seven hundred. Which is a difference of thirteen hundred dollars.
Let's have a pizza party.
That's probably not all we can have. Now, what's important, the most important takeaway from this slide right now is that there's no buffer for economic downturn downturn or state interference. There's no expansion of services or or new projects, no transfer to the community park fund. It includes a reduction in our capital equipment replacement fund payments, which that fund is is scheduled to be exhausted based on current spending and projections in twenty twenty eight. So takeaway from this is that it's looking pretty slim as we stand here right now before you recognizing that we did certain process a little earlier than normal, and some of the numbers may change slightly, but based on what we're looking at. It's it's a slim margin right now, and this is just status quo, I guess is the best way to say it, doesn't include any extras.
And to clarify that um what you mentioned about the reduction in the um in the surf uh payments.
Yes.
Um, so that's, we we, when was it that we reduced those by fifty percent?
This has been, to back up, our surf fund has a healthy fund balance. So we contributed for um equipment replacement and wanting to stay on a good maintenance schedule. Because we all know if you defer maintenance, you're going to end up paying longer in the long run. So I think it was really just in the last few years, or maybe the last couple of years, that we took a concentrated effort to saying, well, practically, what can really, we really do to reduce with the general fund department? Water and sewer also contribute as well, but what water and sewer departments can contribute? I'm sorry, what general fund departments can contribute to replace the amount that's funded to the surf fund for equipment replacement? So take in mind that when we talk to my fool about equipment replacement, and he says, you know, we we can maybe push this off so we can reduce the overall contribution for shortfall. But recognizing that the funds are already slated to be exhausted in just the very short term, near future.
And a- again, to clarify and uh tell me if this is correct, but my understanding is, you know, whatever that was two, three years ago. The previous city administrator instructed us to um reduce those payments by half in an effort to try to balance the budget. And that's where that projection of twenty twenty eight, those those funds would run out if we don't do anything different.
That also ties into expanding the replacement program from like an eight year replacement schedule to a ten. So they kind of work hand in hand with, well, we can reduce the contributions if we then also recognize we're going to have to extend the replacement schedule.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions before I turn it over to the app? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you don't like any of those numbers, don't blame Nikki, she's just crunching the numbers, reporting them accurately. Well, I believe uh at this point, um, I I'm going to just take a a quick minute and ask if there are any audience questions at this point. Um, rather than just, you know, waiting until the very end. Uh, I'll I'll take a a couple of minutes if there are any questions. Um, uh, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Keep in mind that if they are highly technical questions, then um I'll have uh Julieta answer them, just kidding. Uh, then uh we will probably defer to Nikki and then maybe get a written response uh later. If it's not something that we can pull off the top of our minds. But any any quick clarifying questions, um, why don't you come come to the podium if you would, just say your name and ask your question?
Hi, my name is Jeff Johnson. I just want to make sure I understand the one point one instead, or one point seven five percent grocery tax. At this point, that all goes to the city as far as, or does there, is there a split between the state?
One percent of it uh at this point goes to the city.
And then point seven five is sent to the state?
And is that all going state?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And but the whole one point seven five is going away, is that correct?
I think just the municipal part.
Just the one percent.
Yeah.
There will still be a point seven five percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's.
Good clarification. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions at this point? Yes?
This may be something that's common knowledge. Um, what what is the reason that we speak of the community park as part of the city responsibility versus the park?
Park district?
Yep.
I think that the the that the basic answer is that um it is an endeavor which was initiated by the city, not by the park district. And um there are uh existing parks, at least small ones right now, that are city owned rather than uh rather than park district owned. And there are times when the city may have a different set of priorities that might uh, which might motivate them to 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 have a a to to pay for a park. Uh, whereas the 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 park districts priorities are, you know, uh, by virtue of of the task that they have been given are going to be different.
Okay, I just never, you know, I just never knew there was a difference. I just figured all the parks were the park.
Well, I mean, the one that comes to mind uh clearly is is this this little one right across the street from us, which is a city park, the uh Seska Centennial, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, there may be other examples, thank you.
Thanks.
Another question. Could it be because of the the floors at two million that was uh granted to the city? And so this is why we're we're including the.
Yes, um, I'll ask Ms. Messino to provide some context on that.
So, a lot of the things related to community park are a little bit before my time with the city. However, I hope I can provide a little bit of context. Uh, I expect many of you are familiar with Kermagie. And the city's work on remediation and cleaning up and the fact that we've received quite a few grants. The location of Kerr McGee or the location of community park was Kerr McGee property. And as part of the process of moving forward with cleaning that up and moving forward to a brighter future. Uh we completed a, we received a consent decree that said that that space, once cleaned up, can only be used. As open space or parkland space. We have to keep it in that structure. And so that puts us in the position of, okay, that's all we can do with it. And at the time, the people that were advocating this cleanup, that were advocating for movement forward, that were helping us get grants. Their vision was to take this very negative portion of our past and our history. And instead turn it into something beautiful that's giving back to our community and creating a wonderful park structure. Uh if I remember correctly, there is intent to have a sledding hill, accessible park spaces. Uh some wonderful native plantings and landscaping, uh benches. I know some early discussions have suggested pickleball. And so the idea is taking this negative aspect of our histories of community.
Fields.
That has been part of the discussion as well, soccer fields. And taking your time and building up the funding and moving forward to create something that really adds to the quality of life. And to the experience of being in West Chicago. So I hope that gives a little bit of context. Uh early conversations initially involved potentially working with the park district. The park district taking ownership of the land after it was done. At this time, I don't believe there's the interest there to do that, as they have a lot of other areas where they're focusing their kind of capital. And doing improvements on. So this is something that has been a long time coming and it's still gonna take us time to get there. But we've got some very good things in place to start making those steps, which we'll be discussing a little bit more as we move a little further in this presentation. I hope that provides some help.
I think that was a succinct summary. Thank you. Any other um questions? Yes.
A couple of quick ones, and I don't need to come up there.
Well, just for the for the sake of the people that are online, it's helpful.
So. Um I had one question that was regarding the building permits where we saw the reduction of those. But then I wasn't clear on what the the other fees associated with engineering reviews and things like that were kind of flat. And I was just wondering, isn't there a relationship between the amount of people that actually apply for something and the amount of reviews that are being done? So how did one stay flat and the other one dipped?
Specifically to specifically to plan reviews fees should actually see a reduction. And you may very well see that on one of the uh forthcoming budgets as we're doing our estimates. I hear one hundred percent correct that there would be a a correlation there.
Okay, the other one was on the traffic revenue, um traffic light revenue. Is that. Uh assessed fines or received cash?
Well, it is received cash.
Okay.
Keeping in mind that if you didn't pay your red light ticket, you would go to collections. So that twenty thousand dollars you saw that we did receive, that was really the collection revenue. Now, there's no tickets being issued to even go into collections. So that's what the twenty thousand was.
Well, I I would say congratulations because looking at some prior budgets years back. We actually paid more to the company for those red light cameras than we received. We built a million dollars. But we only collected three hundred and paid out like three fifty, so like we lost money on them even though they were working. Um and then of the six million dollars, I I think I heard that correct of the park fund.
Yes.
How much of that was represented by access?
Probably by almost five million, because I specifically have done a transfer of three point five million. And last year I did a transfer of one point four five million, and then there may have been a small amount prior to that. So the bulk of that six million dollars, recognizing that there is a small amount of gaming revenue that goes into that fund as well.
Okay, and so I guess from my standpoint, I would be confused of why we would reduce the capital investment for our equipment. While we take millions of dollars and put it into a parking lot. So if we cut those back for a couple of years, yet we haven't had access. I would say restore those things that are necessary to operate the city before you put access, before you consider it access. But um thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you, and and I would say um valid concerns, but uh let's uh. Let's kind of stick to clarifying questions at the moment, and then we'll have a chance for kind of more comments in a little bit. So I think we'll go ahead and move on. Um Ms. Messino uh is gonna give us a little bit uh of a rundown of the. Of some of the requests uh for expenditures for the twenty twenty six budget.
So as we dive into this category, I want to be very clear. West Chicago's budget schedule, we typically don't start meeting with department heads until sometime well into September to go over these items. But because we're trying to shift towards more engagement, more transparency, we're moving that timeline up to an earlier portion in the year. And so any of these items that I'm listing right now as potential expansions of service or new requests. These are not items that have been vetted as things that we're actually moving forward and making a recommendation on. These are items that have come up in conversation with members of the public, with elected officials, with departments. That does not mean that these are items that are actually going to make it in a form of the budget that we are going to put forward to recommend for the council to approve. So given all of the conversations and times where people have had ideas that they think could be useful for the city. We wanted to help by providing some preliminary numbers so that we have context on what those things could cost. So that as we're having revenue discussions and expenditure discussions, we're just having everybody kind of operating from the same playbook. And understanding the same kind of expenses for the different asks. So these are not actual budget requests at this time. But items for consideration and discussion and to help us with hearing what are the priorities. So as we go into that, we're gonna start with a couple of staffing-related numbers. For every police officer that we would look to add, we would need to account for about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And then that's of course going to be a cost that continues every year forward, and it would increase with the union contract raises for that. Uh in the police department, uh at one point, we had approximately eight records clerks. And at this time, we are down to two records clerks and a supervisor. And one of the things that the records clerks help us with is they do FOIA responses. As a city, we've experienced about a fifty percent increase in requests for FOIAs. And with changing determinations on body camera footage and how much needs to be made accessible to the public. And how much redaction the city is also required to do to protect those that aren't actually involved with the incident. That takes a significant amount of staff time and resources. One potential way for the city to address that would be to add another records clerk. Which preliminary estimates would be about ninety four thousand dollars. Uh there's been talks about expanding our social services for the community. We currently have one social worker. And she is kept very busy with the existing projects and the existing outreach. However, if the community is looking for expansion on the kinds of things that we're working on. Then we would be looking at about a hundred and nine thousand dollars for a new social worker. Uh next, we at the end of twenty twenty four began the work of creating a new department. And this new department came about in part because through many of our planning sessions with the community and. Uh conversations with the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, there's been a conversation that the community wants to see more investment in economic development. And so with the creation of the business and community relations department, we now have a department that has a very strong focus. On economic development, culture, lifestyle, quality of life for the community. At this time, that department is very lean. So we have a department director, a communications person. And a special events person. We don't have as assistant department director. We don't have administrative support for that department. Um and so at this time, there are two positions that have been put forward for initial consideration. Which would be a business specialist, and that's someone who would be primarily focused on enhancing economic development in the community. And a program specialist, and that's someone who would be focused on assisting with administrative components. On the other end of the slide, we're looking at some conversations about more engagement-oriented things that have come up in community discussions. Uh one of the items that was discussed is seeking more community input and creating more opportunities. For our community members to have a say in the decisions that are being made. There are a couple of different options with that, and if we were to use kind of the more base structure through Survey Monkey, we'd be looking at about three thousand dollars. There's also very strong engagement platforms that are available out there. One of the examples could be Polco. And those platforms are really designed for a regular basis of community engagement. And provide some excellent reporting features back to your council, back to staff. And can be a helpful tool in having that level of conversation that we're hearing that our community is looking for. So that would be on the higher end at ten thousand dollars. At this time, our city website. I think we've heard from quite a few people, it's got some challenges. We've had challenges with the search function not bringing you the information that you're looking for. We've also had issues where items that have been posted then unposted themselves. And we also are currently experiencing challenges within the website about it meeting upcoming accessibility standards. In April twenty twenty seven, there are going to be new standards that as a local government, we will be held to. To making our content accessible for all community members. And our current website with its many plugins and kind of Frankenstein parts. Isn't in a good place to allow us to meet those accessibility needs in April twenty twenty seven. So we're looking at the option of bringing forward a recommendation of instead, starting in twenty twenty six to build a new website from scratch. With all of those accessibility features built in from the very beginning with. The kinds of things that our community members have said that they want on the website built in from the very beginning. So that we have a strong foundation and a website that can take us there. Uh as part of our budget this year, we had added some new features for translations, such as these meetings. After they're recorded, we actually submit them to a company and they provide professional Spanish translations and ADA level closed captions. So we're increasing the accessibility and the engagement available for these meetings. At the time that we put that budget together, it was based on three years' history of how long those meetings were. However, we've had increased engagement, which is fantastic, but it does mean that the meetings are going longer. We're having more of these meetings. And so that means that we need to increase that cost. And so we have to account for that in our budgets. Uh discussions from community members that they really wanna see parades. And so something to keep in mind is if we are looking at doing a parade, that's about six thousand dollars in overtime per parade. And then you also want to account for compensation for some of the different units and groups that are typically involved in parades. And early estimates for that are five thousand dollars, but that is still very preliminary. So as we move into this next slide, this one's a little bit more complicated. Um a lot of what Public Works does affects multiple funds. And so when we look at these dollar amounts that are on this slide at this time. That does not mean that these dollar amounts would be all going towards or being pulled from the general fund. But these are items that we just simply want to get on the radar because they're in a position where we're going to be needing to get direction from the city council. And the city council will want to hear from the community on where their feelings for these different items are. Uh last year, our water treatment plant during a heavy storm experienced damage for the roof in one section. We were able to resolve that problem, get that section of the roof repaired. But with a building that is housing our community's water supply, we wanna make sure that now we're being proactive with remaining segments of the roof. And we're getting that upgraded before there's anything more serious that would happen.
Snap and happening. Yep.
Uh the next item is. We conducted a space needs assessment for Public Works. Right now, our public works services are actually spread out across, I'm gonna say, five or six different buildings. And by doing that, you run into some inefficiencies of operations, some challenging challenges of managing. But then also several buildings throughout the community that are currently being used by the city that could have a better use. In the future with a different group that could serve better developments. Um as well as part of that is we have some of our equipment that is stored at the West Washington site, which is a location that we are looking to. Clear out and make ready for development in the future for some very positive community-enhancing space. As we are looking at those challenges, one of the options. Once again, this is not something that is being recommended at this time, but it is something that we had done some preliminary research into. Is the idea of doing an addition on the grounds where the current water treatment plant is. Where we bring all of the public works operations onto one site. And then we turn around and make those various buildings available for future developments. If the city were to move ahead on a project like that with current very early estimates. It would be looking at something along the lines of a twenty seven million dollar project. And year one, two million, if we were to start that in twenty twenty six, would be getting the. Ball rolling, engineering, and getting everything prepped for that. So that is where that number comes from. To be clear, that would not all be coming out of the general fund. That would be coming out across a couple of different funds if that even moves forward. Which is not what we're moving ahead with right now. We're not making a recommendation on, but it's important to share with all of you. Kind of what we got out of that site assessment, that space needs assessment, so that we can have you all be part of that conversation as well. So the next item we're gonna talk about is the city museum, which that building formerly our city hall at one point. Uh we had put some money in the budget because there are some significant masonry window and exterior pieces that are crumbling. And we are at risk of losing that historic structure if we don't start making some steps to do repairs. Initially, we anticipated that those repairs would be at about five hundred thousand dollars, which we had already planned for in our budgets. Looking at it now with updated numbers and more further assessment, it's looking closer to a million. Uh one of the other items that has been talked about that could affect the general fund. Is we have many items that are in our capital improvements program that really perhaps make more sense to be in the general fund. And treated more like regular maintenance items. So a combination of those items could be streetlights, patching, paint, sewer repair, etc. And in totality, those items would come up to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. There's been discussions about putting some more effort forward on economic revitalization. So more business grants uh focusing and investment in our downtown. That Washington site that we talked about a little bit already, that we have our open house on tomorrow, actually. So if you are interested in participating and looking at that site, open house tomorrow, four to five P M, but please fill out the R S V P and waiver online. Clothes, toes, shoes, please. Uh that is a site that has a lot of potential for the future of West Chicago. However, we would like to bring in a consultant to help us gather community inputs. And then put that into a plan that we can then share with our department so that we can start making long-term cleanup. And preparation of the site plans uh so that we can work on what infrastructure is going to be needed to be put there to succeed with those concept plans. But before we can really move forward with that, we need a plan that's been vetted by our city council. Uh we're all familiar with our historic dream, Train Depot in that area. And there have been a lot of discussions about moving forward with that into some sort of community benefit with that space. If we're going to do that, we're going to need design services. We're going to need support in figuring out how we can take that historic structure. And turn it into something that's going to be positive for bringing economic revitalization to our downtown in West Chicago. Uh one of the other items that has come up to bring people and invite them into our community is going forward with some kind of cultural farmer's market activity. And so our staff has already been in contact with someone that does that kind of program for other communities in the region. And they put forward an initial estimate of about twenty thousand dollars to move ahead with that kind of program. Next item we have over here is community park, which we have talked about already pretty significantly. Uh the fund balance is a little over six million right now. If we're to move ahead with the plans that are already in place and the designs that are already in place. We'd be looking to spend about two million of that six million in twenty twenty six. The overall cost estimate for the entirety of that community park project. It looks like it would be around thirteen million dollars. it looks like it would be around thirteen million dollars. And then some additional money that we're just kind of putting a placeholder in is developable site preparation. So that can include removing structures or other debris that's currently on the site that could be suitable for development, doing land surveys to help make that developable site more enticing and provide more information to potential developers to try and really kickstart some positive momentum for the community. Some other requests that we have received from the police department, we're looking at about twenty seven thousand for a Taser upgrade. We've talked about FOIA with our body cameras. We're looking at a software that could also be an option for helping on the FOIA front, which utilizes A I to assist staff with redactions. Uh, one of the other items that's come up in a decent amount of conversation is the idea of putting money towards business incubator programs as well as potentially a food hall. So at this time, there's a placeholder amount that we're starting with for community discussion towards starting up and having programs of that nature. Uh, the next item would be footsaw courts. And those are a kind of specialized football field court. That's more about the size of a tennis court. And uh, that's a program that if we were to move ahead with it, we'd be looking at the city's contribution to be around a hundred and twenty five thousand, and then we'd be seeking external support and funding at around two hundred and fifty thousand. The next item.
She was using football in the European sense.
Yes, I apologize. I've been, I watch a little bit too much European TV. Thank you very much. Uh, our next item recognizes that we have aspects of our code that are simply out of date. And staff and our elected officials have known that for years, and it has always been on our list. Hey, when we have time, let's go and make some updates. Let's bring things into the modern era. Unfortunately, wouldn't you know it, we haven't really found much time. And so uh, what we're looking at doing is applying the idea of putting a specific dollar amount in our budget. Here we're mentioning thirty thousand to bring in a consultant who can handle doing that work when we simply don't have the time to do it. And so we give them a section of the code and we say, all right, this area we know is rough. We want you to review that. And they get through as much as they can with the amount of money we have in the budget. We clean up what we can, and then the next year, we go back and we do the same thing. So that way, we're not going to get it all solved at once, but we can start making incremental steps towards having the code reflect what our community needs it to be going forward.
Can I give one example on that? Uh, just so you know what we're talking about. One example, our current code does not allow for yoga studios in the downtown area. And so we had at one point someone that was looking to have a yoga studio and that was according to our code at the time not allowed, so they uh, were not able to be there. But now a dance studio came and they are allowed to be in there. And so those are, that's an ex, one example of something that has come up with staff where we say, okay, this probably doesn't make sense at this day and age to not allow a yoga studio. So that kind of a thing.
And then the next item, uh, our Business and Community Relations Department has been working on an exciting project of creating a new kind of economic development and culture and lifestyle webpage that is going to really kind of sell the message of West Chicago. And that webpage has gone pretty far through the process of being built and the community feedback. But now we're at the point where we need to account for in the out years, a hosting fee, which twenty thousand dollars a year in hosting fees is what we're preliminarily hearing. Okay, so that was a lot of information. I just want to take a moment to reiterate that these are numbers just to help with discussions. None of these things are guaranteed. None of them have even had the time of sitting a bunch of department heads together, looking at our revenues and evaluating, okay, these are the ones that we think make sense to move forward on. They're just some numbers to help us all have constructive discussions moving forward. So then the next item that I'd like to talk about is similar. These are new revenue options. Once again, these are items for discussion. They aren't specifically recommended. Some of them are actually going to be specifically, we're gonna say, we don't think they'd be a good fit for West Chicago. But we want to kind of lay our cards out on the table so that you are kind of working with the same information that we're working with. So the first few items are going to be items that I think most of you have already heard about, which is the grocery tax where we're estimating that we would lose about four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And if we were to implement our own local grocery tax, we would then just get that money right back. So it's a one for one. That's been adopted by approximately two hundred and nineteen communities so far, so it's a pretty popular option. But it does target necessities like food. Now SNAP recipients are exempted, so there's a little bit of balance there. If we were to go forward with that as an option, then we would need to make a decision and have our ordinance and our information postmarked by the deadline of October first, or we will no longer have that option. So that's part of why we're moving up our timelines is we've got this restriction and this structure that we have to fit in from the state of Illinois. And so we're trying to get that public discussion going now so that we can meet these deadlines. The next option would be the home rule sales tax, which would estimated bring in one point two million. So that provides additional revenue over what we would be expecting to lose with the grocery tax. Could really help balance out the losses with the red light uh, cameras. The rate that we would result in would be eight point seven five percent, which is higher than uh, many of our peers. And it also includes some types of necessities like diapers and clothes and also includes luxury goods. This would not apply to titled assets like vehicles or trailers. This is also something that to get the revenue starting in January, we would need to have that postmarked by October first. So we've got a similar deadline that we have to make this decision on if we want to move ahead with either of those revenue options.
And just one clarification, those numbers are based on a one percent grocery tax and on a point two five percent uh, home rule sales tax.
Okay, next thing we're going to talk about is something that's been very popular recently or a popular topic of discussion, I should say. And some of the challenges we're experiencing related to truck traffic and heavy equipment in our community. So heavy trucks and as well as large outdoor storage sites have a tendency to strain our roads beyond their economic return. So what we're saying is that those sites may not be generating much revenue for the community to offset what they're actually costing us to have them going across our infrastructure. And with the current revenue sources that we have, we're not really keeping up with that deterioration. There are some options that we could look at. This is one of those items that we'll be seeking the city council to let us know if it's something we'd be interested in us pursuing and interested in us at least getting some more solid numbers and some more information on. And so one of them could be an infrastructure preservation tax. Would be an annual tax on outdoor storage of commercial vehicles, equipment, and materials. This is not you at home having something that you're storing on your property. This is from a commercial perspective. And the, an additional option that we could look at would be increasing the diesel motor fuel tax. So if we were to, for example, add six percent per gallon on the diesel motor fuel tax, which would target our truck traffic, we could estimate about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And that could be money that we could direct to go directly into road fund and road rehabilitation. So here are some additional considerations that often come up when people are discussing revenues. And I want to be very clear that these are not recommendations, but they are common things that are talked about. And they are things that if the city council is interested in staff looking further into, then we would need direction to go that, go down that path. So the first is cannabis dispensary. That came up at one of our recent public meetings where someone mentioned that they'd really like us to consider that as an option for generating revenue. Next item, amusement taxes. Actually came up earlier that with us losing cable taxes and telecommunication, that another option could be to look at a streaming tax. It's not something we're recommending right now because there's still a lot of legal implications that seem to be being worked out. But it is something that we should keep on our radar as a potential option in the future as those other revenue sources continue to decline. We would want to look at increasing our amusement fee because we're already higher than many of our peers and we want to try to keep things close in a comparative markets. Another common item that will come up would be a vehicle sticker. Uh, but those are complex and costly to administer. They also often have a aggressive impact. So they tend to more negatively affect our lower income residents. So it's not something that we would recommend moving forward with. And then an additional item that often comes up would be a restaurant food and beverage tax. Many other communities in this area actually have those. However, to implement one does take a decent amount of staff time. It's also an administrative burden for the businesses. And we feel that at this time, it would likely deter growth, and that's not the path that we're looking to go down. So it is not something that we are recommending at this time be considered. So at that point, that kind of puts us as these are some numbers, these are some possibilities that we should all have in mind as we're starting to move into our budget season, as we're discussing potential revenues. And as well as as community members, as you're providing comments on the kinds of things you may like to see, things that you may be less interested in seeing. Uh, at this point, I'd be happy to take some questions and answer the ones that I can at this time. Yes.
Just a comment in relationship to those vehicle stickers we had those years ago. And because of just what you said about the complex of handling, that's the reason we got rid of it. So my thought process, that should be fricking rich before it even comes out.
Okay. Anybody else for this portion? Oliver Marks.
Have a heavy, heavy truck? Like permits or licenses or any of that.
So Chief, you want to give a little bit of context on the revenue that we do end up getting related to heavy trucks?
Sure. So also our, I wanted to bring in heavy trucks to do enforcement. So we're at about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in fines that we've recovered this year for enforcement for overweight vehicles. Uh, there's no permit for overweight vehicles other than what's called a OX card permit. So let's say you're gonna bring a big piece of a bridge in. Right? And it's supposed to be enormous trucks, a wide heavy loads. They have to file a permit. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, if you can recall. I think we're at about forty thousand in act card or something like that. You think? So we do get, we do get some, but it's not um, just businesses inside West Chicago that so we have an officer, Officer Moose, that does our overweight trucks enforcement. So he monitors all of the requests for OX card uh, permits every day. So he, he does all the permitting for that. That way we know that the heavy trucks are coming through. And then if they don't, if they come through and they didn't get that OX card permit, then we would write them that's a several thousand dollar fine.
So we are on track to bring in about twenty eight thousand.
Absolutely. So a big twenty. And then a lot of that depends on how much building is going on. So if there's a building going on, we'll get a lot more of the of the requests for those OX card permits. Um, so when in seasons like we've had in the last couple of years, it's kind of diminished a little bit. You know, we're coming spurt, so you see all our factory go up or something. Our big uh, bridges that are being built, if they're gonna bring through our road. And again, that is specifically to be used to help kind of absorb the cost of having uh, rules. We have to take care of our road, city, take care of highways.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one thing on red lights.
Yeah.
You did a great job, by the way. Uh, we have, uh, they shut them off April of last year. We were told they would be back on uh, within two months. They were supposed to be back in. Uh, we've been sending repeated emails over to read their article, David Harold. Everybody's fighting with IDOT to get them back on. We were told they would be back on before last year. Uh, the highest we recovered in, in receipts within, in twenty twenty three, about a mil, little over a million dollars. Um, we brought it down expecting they're gonna be gone for just a couple of months. It didn't happen. They said they're gonna be coming back before the end of the year. They are still not back. We, we believed them. We projected lower than, than the million and kind of got burned by even that. And uh, they do say that they're coming, but, but there is a request to, to do fiber optic cable work within the city. And it would affect the areas of fifty nine, thirty eight, and sixty four along the path of where our, our red light cameras are now. So every time they work, um, they do any type of maintenance on our red light cameras in Washington or fifty nine and, and thirty eight or sixty four, they have to turn the electricity off. Until they close the permit, I mean, they're, they're done with their work and there's no timeframe for them to do it. The company that's been had the permit open has not, has dragged their feet. We can't force them as a municipality to do their work. So they keep it shut down until that permit's closed. And so we've been trying to get them to move along and, and pressure them to do it. And uh, we're just at their mercy right now. They claim that they're gonna have it done by September. They reissue us our, our permits and we should get going, I hope, but hope isn't gonna help us on this. If you have any questions, Matt, I can answer them for you later, too.
Thanks, Chief. One more question on this red light.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, let's, I, we had one question here.
I'm sorry.
I believe Mr. Johnson, and then we can go to Mr. Rhiannon there.
On your uh, additional staff, does that include uh, total benefits and everything uh, within that number?
Yes, those estimates include total benefit.
Okay. And then um, uh, in terms of, so you're recommending, or not recommending, you are putting out that a possibility of a quarter percent increase on the sales tax.
Uh, yes, a quarter percent, is that what you said?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And so that, okay. Then on the things where you said there'd be multiple departments uh, contributing that, do you have a rough percentage as to what would be the part the general fund would have to bear to those?
Not at this time. Those items are so preliminary in the budgeting process that we have not sat down to figure out what would be a sensible allocation.
Okay, have you got any sense on a historical basis of any type of those projects?
I, I wouldn't be able to provide that tonight.
Okay, all right. That'd just be interesting to know, right? So.
I should add, though, we're gonna continue to have these workshops. And so as we continue through this process, we're going to have more information. Things are going to be firmed up. And so you will start to see more details like that as we continue through this process.
Thank you very much. It's more clear, sorry, what's the, we've missed the, does it bad? Mentioned with the red light cameras that we pay a company to take care of that for us? Do we still pay that company when the red light cameras are not working or IDOT doesn't have them? So there's no funds going out if nothing happens?
Correct.
Okay, I was just.
Okay. Uh, I, Mr. Who are you?
Question about uh, as far as like other sources of revenue, have we considered um, like advertising on city property? Or like selling naming rights to things, especially like if we talk about like downtown development, have like a plaza, call it the virus plaza or something like that, or you know, like.
For the right price.
They remember my name.
That might help.
But uh, like have we, have you considered that and also maybe like uh, allowing, you know, people to advertise on, on city-owned buildings? We have a lot of buildings, so there's a lot of like flat surfaces that we could, you know, put advertisements on, has, have ever been discussed.
So that hasn't been discussed yet, but that's something that I can bring back to the team and see in what, in what instances that could be allowable, just given existing sign code and regulations like that.
I guess along the same ideas, I, I know the past we've done might be like if you donate a certain amount of money, you can, your family can donate like a tree. And then you have your family, mine, stuff like that, too. But just, I don't think that we do that anymore.
Like benches.
You pay five hundred dollars, this star will be named after you.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, let's, at this point, I'm gonna call on the, the people that um, had specific comments and.
You know what? We had discussed that we would do an initial discussion on selected officials.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Ms. Messino keeps me uh, on, on target here. Ms. Messino keeps me on, on target here. We're gonna have a preliminary discussion among the council members. And then we'll have the community comments and questions. And then a, a brief follow up from the council members. And that will, that will, that will be it. We're not deciding anything tonight, just to clarify. We are attempting to pull back the curtain and let you see what we see. So let, that said, let's have some discussion, council members. If there is, if there is let, let's, let's, let's kind of break it down by parts a little bit. We'll take the first section, which was essentially revenue. And let's talk about that, and then we will go to expenses. So the revenue half of things, any comments or questions? Alderman Myers?
Yes, so I kind of touched upon this already, I think that as far as like, I think we need to be finding other ways to find revenue that's not just taxes. And I think, yeah, I think with, for not accessing the only way that we, that we increase revenue. But I do see that there's, there's not a whole lot of other areas that, that really like gives the, the quantities that we're looking for, like you sell the naming rights to benches, we get like maybe a couple thousand dollars. It doesn't really like read all the way that, that a grocery tax or a sales tax goes into. And, you know, I am, I am concerned by some of the, like, the numbers going down, especially with, like, you know, cable franchise fees. I could, with, you know, streaming becoming a big thing, like, obviously this is going down even more. Very interested in getting the red light camera back up, although I've been caught by it like two, three times. But donation to the city of Maryland. I would also, I didn't mention this, but like, is it possible to, to look at like the, the transportation fees? Is that like in a contract or is that something that you guys?
Yes. Do either of our?
That is in the contract.
Which goes through when? Do we know?
Oh, I think, I think it's a longer garbage contract, so it's longer than four years this time. We can let you know for sure, but it has been negotiated already within time.
We'll, we'll get more specific answers on that. Yes.
So I guess just to follow on Alderman Myers' statement. Tax seems to be the one more upfront because of the short timeframe that we have to get everything lined up. So we couldn't put something else on the table that we didn't vote through our voting, et cetera, bring it to the public in order to go ahead and get it implemented before October first. Because now, then we lose that option, and that goes out off the table and we have, we really have to scramble to find something in two months timeframe and implement.
And to underline that, it actually goes off the table permanently.
Oh.
We would have to, if we want to do a municipal home rule grocery tax, we would have to do it this year. Alderman Hall.
Thank you.
I remember your name.
Well, nobody likes taxes. I hate taxes, most of us do. But bills and services require money of some form. And what we have discussed here tonight is the different requirements we have to meet on a regular basis. As much as I think about people saying how difficult it is for people with limited income. There's no easy way out of this at all. And I just think we will have to move forward with the tax as much as we don't want. There is not that many different options. I mean, you mentioned Alderman Myers mentioned advertising on buildings and stuff like that, but I don't think that would go over very good with people seeing signs painted on their building. That's what they used to do a long time. Even out of the hallway, we can see pictures of buildings in this town way back when they had that sort of stuff. So that, there's not a lot of options here. We're just going to have to move forward and get going with this and get it done as quickly as we can. But as sensibly too. You know, not just jumping in headfirst, whatever it was. We've had great information presented to us tonight. We got a lot to work in with based on that. But we need to get going. We need to speed up the process here.
Yes, Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
He knows my name.
Shut that one.
I am very interested in the situation with the heavy trucks. And when I, when I walked in, I he, he ultimately gave us an idea and also I'm looking at how our heavy, these heavy trucks do do a lot of damage to our infrastructure. As well as, you know, also the, the diesel or sometimes I'm driving behind or we have to sometimes, you, you can smell it, feel bad, you know. And I believe that it would be, it would be makes common sense for those diesel owners to think a little more of the damage they're doing and so if the, if they get stopped because you're going through our, our town. I'm, I'm still observing because people are saying, you know. I'm going to move you at that, this is the limit. And so I'm looking at that and then Alderman, you said the fifty dollars. So why only fifty dollars?
Is the P for what? Perhaps the chief could, could clarify that.
Maybe, maybe it's not, but.
It's not, it's not from the heavy.
So my thunder for the Public Affairs Committee.
Yeah.
So this is actually, no, you're great. This is actually one of my proposals that we're going to talk about. On Monday, the Public Affairs Committee meeting is raising the, you talked about raising the fines. As you talked about, it's a fifty dollar fine for driving down the city streets, you know, to come down Arbor. It's only a fifty dollar fine, right?
Right.
I mean, the, the time it takes us to stop them and, right, they've already fifty dollars worth of pay, right, to do that. So that's one of the things that I'll be talking, discussing with Public Affairs Committee to raise that fine. One other thing that we did also with the, and I know I spoke mostly about this. We, we implemented this DAFFRA system, this new taking system. As part of that, we also started doing local adjudication for overweight trucks. So not just the ones driving with the wrong license plate on it, but the actual overweight, so they have heavy big heavy trucks that don't get a permit. So where the, the county used to take about sixty five percent of that, and we got a lower than twelve percent, I think it was, something around that. We get almost all of it now through local adjudication. When we, when we cite them through in ordinance, so we're not sharing that money. We'll see how that, we're looking at, we're seeing the funds coming in from DAFFRA now. They look in, I like them coming in there, they look pretty good. We'll see there's a lot of collections right now, but that, I think, well, that's one of the ways we're trying to do to collect more of that money back. Local adjudication as well. But I didn't have the numbers to put up here because it's so new. We just started it in.
I want to just like say that some of those proposals might make sense. The raising the fine from fifty dollars probably makes sense because fifty dollars is not going to be significantly motivating to people. But as a whole, just as a reminder, as a city, like, our purpose is not to like, you know, is not to assess fines. We are not a business that is saying, hey, where can we assess more fines? We're not finding the jaywalkers, maybe we can get some revenue there, you know, that's, that's not where we're wanting to go with, 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 with our city. There, there are realities that we have to face and to think, think through when we're budgeting in terms of red light cameras and, and, and all that thing, that kind of thing. But you know, that we, we also don't, our, our, our city is not, we're not wanting to drive things by just, hey, where can we find more and more ways to assess fines? And to, you know, take, let's hire another eight police officers so we can assess more, you know. Hey, this is great news. We got, you know, a, a hundred percent increase on heavy trucks coming through. Now we've got more revenue. Obviously, we don't want to see the heavy trucks. And if they were to stop coming, that would be a good thing. And so that, for that reason, we don't want to base our, we don't want to base our, our, our budgeting on policing.
If I may, so the concept on fines, police department aspect of it. So Arbor is not made for, for these, this size truck, right? So the type of, and who pay a lot more, but the type of payment they create for that type is just not made. That's why those trucks are not, they're prohibited. So the, the portion of the fine on earth is, is how do we recover the cost of the overall budget that it costs to go ahead and have those roadways repaired? So it's not necessarily a punitive aspect at this point for the trucks. It's, well, we're going to have to replace these now earlier than we expected or pretty much a different schedule. So how can we try to, to refund some of that money for, because, you know, we have to collect it somehow. And so there has to be some way for, and my aspect of it is, how do I then recover the cost of it? And like in the red lights, the, the big one for the red lights, those are, those are there because of the number of accidents, even the size of the intersection. And that's a recovery of the cost for what it takes to investigate those accidents, what it takes, you know, the time that, that is lost when those are down. So again, that's kind of that recovery aspect of, of that and trying to lower it, and we're trying to curb. I don't want the trucks going there at all.
Right.
If our fine goes to five hundred dollars for an overweight truck on Arbor Street, hopefully they won't do that, and they won't cause five hundred dollars worth of damage, which accumulates each truck. So that's kind of the thought on our.
Yes, and, and I think we're saying the same thing, but it's just to kind of just remind us, orient us here, like, it's not like.
It's not a generation fuel, fuel.
Right.
Right. If what, if our, if our policing works and we no longer have heavy trucks coming down Washington Street, that's a good thing. And so I, I also want to just emphasize what or piggyback on the point that Chief Flory made and also that Ms. Messino made. You know, I, I personally was signing. I was, I was, I was signing a document that I was authorizing the city to pay one point three million dollars for a new street. And so I went through and looked at the, the taxes that, the property taxes, I should say, that every company that was located on that street paid annually because it did happen to be essentially a dead end area. And, and said, okay, how much would it cost? Or how long would it take us based on the portion that the city gets from those, from those taxes? How long would it take us to pay off the roads that we're putting in this year? And I'm not saying that this is representative of everything, but it's again, just to kind of be part of the discussion that, yes, these are real issues. The figure on that one I came up with was thirty five years. It would take us thirty five years just to pay for that street, taking all of the taxes that come from those companies and putting it towards the road, nothing else, no other infrastructure. So I am not saying you know, every, every action that we take has unintended repercussions. And so we also need to think about, okay, do we, you know, are we going to put such a heavy tax burden on our industry that they don't want to be there, then, you know, all of a sudden we have empty spaces, that's not good either. But if the reality is that we are not recouping the costs, then, yeah, it does make sense to, to think through some of those things. That's my input there.
Yes.
Alderman Demus.
Yes, I just wanted to get back to the discussion about the possible grocery tax and where the home rule sales tax. I know we had a long discussion in our finance committee and I, I do believe, and the reason that we voted unanimously is because we see it as less of a burden to do the one for one because people are already paying out in their grocery tax now. And so that impact actually would not be seen moving forward if we just implemented that one percent back. So and that was, I think, the reason that, as, as a finance committee decided that that was the better reason to go ahead and implement that grocery tax, just to keep that moving forward. And I, and I know as far as the home rule sales tax, there's, there's a, there's a possibility we might need that down the road any. So I'm not, I'm not saying that that's going away completely, but especially if we continue to lose revenue and we continue to lose support from the state as they have taken it away and taken it away and taken it away. I'm just saying that I still believe that moving forward, that that grocery tax makes some sense.
Okay, so part of what we do as the city councils sometimes is to try to take point and counterpoint. So is there any of the council that would like to give a counterpoint to that? You know, I initially said, let's talk about revenue. I gave up on that a number of minutes ago. It feels like this is good productive discussion. So anybody want to make a counterpoint to the other supporting the, the, the sales tax? Okay, Alderman Switzer.
I would actually like to support what Alderman Demus.
Well, we'll, we'll do that in just a second, but I'm just.
But I also want to add a couple of things that Ms. Messina has added.
Okay.
I think cleaning up the codes would go a long way. I think that would be a great investment because that would turn around potential incoming businesses would.
Yeah.
Would benefit, so.
I want to make a space for anybody that wants to give a counterpoint to the sales tax versus versus grocery tax. Yes, Alderman.
I'm looking at these two proposals. I'm, I'm thinking of the, you know, what we're going to get back. And I, I believe, I strongly believe the home rule sales tax would help us more down the road. In the aspect that when those of us who can, you know, you're going through the marriage, you're going to buy other stuff, there's that food, there are necessities. And then people are going to shop at our shops, our stores. They would, that would help us tremendously. You know, I have been told some constituents have been saying, they, they think that their taxes are on retail makes more sense than doing the grocery tax.
I'm hearing, I'm seeing some people leaning forward. Are we having a little trouble hearing? The green lights should be on. Perhaps Alderman and Alcantara Garcia, you can bring your mic a little closer to your, to your body.
Do you hear me? Yes, okay. So I was saying some feedback that I've got and also I'm looking at what will achieve would be a bigger amount of money than just doing the one percent taxes on groceries. So I am looking at what we will need to do with the what we need to do for the next year. And I would not want us to. To stop, to stop growing, moving forward with certain things. With that said, I mean, we can, you know, there's still gonna be numbers given to us and all. But uh I would prefer the home rule sales tax.
All right, we'll go uh the other way, uh is uh. With, do you have a point for the uh grocery tax, Alderman Marano? Okay?
Well, not necessarily in favor of the grocery tax question. Uh, I I think she did a nice job, like, kind of. Comparing the two and to kind of bringing us to like what, how she got to where she was thinking, and my thought process is with the grocery tax going away. Um, you know, you're looking at four hundred twenty five thousand dollars in loss, um, but the sales tax that we provide one point two million, I mean. We're we're losing four hundred thousand, but yet now we're asking for three times that amount from our community through sales tax. I I I don't think that's fair to our community. I don't. I don't think that's the best way to go about it. Um, again, further down the road. It was needed, um, certainly there, um, but I I don't think taking a repack to give out from our community a sales tax and. But he just has one of the top sales, a high sales taxes in all DuPage County once we do so. I don't think that's a good place for us to be.
Okay, Alderman Myers.
So um I'm actually, I am in favor of the grocery tax, but I but I wanted to give a counterpoint to that, which is that. Uh, we'll be still don't have as any data on whether sales tax burden is both. Uh, felt by West Chicago citizens or if it's helped by like people passing through. So that's, that's still, I think, an open thing. Uh, I'd say Charles had uh some. There is some like cellphone data and like trying to track like, you know, where their own citizens going into their grocery stores or where they're going into. Um, going into other stores, and I and I think that was one of the reasons that they they did. Uh, lean towards the grocery tax was because they felt that that their grocery stores were actually. Uh, getting a lot of citizens from other cities, you know, and I know for sure. I go to St. Charles uh Targets and. And Walmart, so uh we still don't know really who is bearing the burden of that of that three times amount. Um, but one point that I wanted to ask is, so so you may mention that. If we if we choose not to adopt the one percent grocery tax now. Then it it is off the table for the future. If we choose to adopt the one percent sales tax now, can we, can we revoke it to the future?
Do the quarter percent sales tax?
No, the one percent.
I will, if Nikki, do you have a definitive answer on that?
What I can tell you is that per Alderman Demus's recommendation, how the grocery tax ordinance was structured was that it was to be revisited annually. And so then, if the decision then was made to repeal that, we would repeal that. We would want to revisit that by, say, September of each year, so then we could still make that October first deadline for the following January or Justin.
And that is my understanding too, and we can, we can verify that. But uh I've never heard anyone say that it cannot be canceled, just that it. It's a, it's a one time thing to get in on.
That maximum flexibility seems to be to 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 go forward with it. And then then we we can choose next year to uh to change our priorities.
So. I'm also part of the council, though I reside. Um, but I'm gonna give a, I'm gonna give a counterpoint for the. For the sales tax, the quarter percent. I I I'm in favor of the quarter percent uh sales tax, and this is why. You're right, uh, Alderman Myers, that we don't know who uh would. We don't know the proportion of residents that would be paying either the sales tax or the grocery tax. But we do know that grocery tax uh would. Would target or would fall more heavily on necessities. Um, as opposed to disposable income. The point has been raised that. Some of the most vulnerable. Uh, would not be affected. Because they're part of government programs that that would exempt that from them from that. Um, but. Most of the most vulnerable in our community uh would not be. Making use of those government programs. Yes, we are talking about, in either case, a relatively minute number. And the fact is, if we were not discussing it, if we just did it. Probably ninety nine point nine percent of people would not even notice. And I think that that's the main reason why. Two hundred and fifty nine or whatever it is municipalities went with the grocery tax. From my talking with uh mayors and so forth, I think that it is viewed as the option which will be less noticeable. Because people are used to paying it. But I do not think that it follows that it is less of a burden. And um. The fact that people are used to it. Does not speak to whether or not we would be alleviating or creating a a a burden. It just speaks to whether people. Recognize it or not, which is a different issue. Um, I think that the um that the grocery tax would be. More of a burden on the most vulnerable people of uh of our community. And I think that most of us would not notice or. A fat or change our behaviors by a quarter percent increase on taxing a patio umbrella. Sorry, uh, I'm 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 looking out out there uh at our our uh our. Part of our business community now, um, but I I do think that it would be more. More of a, more of an issue. Uh, for the person who already does not have enough money to buy enough food for their family, if we take. More money away from them. So I just want to state that that's, that's why I am, that is the primary reason why I am for. The sales tax. I also would add to that. That I I I agree, like, none of us uh want, want increased uh taxes. Um, but I, I personally do. Appreciate the services that my taxes buy. And I've lived in places that didn't have significant taxes, that didn't have the services that we have. And so it is a two way street. I appreciate having nine one one uh be able to respond right away to my call. I appreciate having good schools for my kids and. And um. And I am, I am. Speaking for myself here, uh personally happy to pay those taxes that provide for those services for my family. I recognize that the community does not want higher taxes. We have the highest effective tax rate. In DuPage County. Uh, and that is the primary way that the city impacts us tax wise. Is on our property taxes, and that's uh specifically what I'm speaking of, that we have the highest effective tax rate in DuPage County. Now, that is not just the city. The city is a a relatively minor point of that. Um, but I think that. I think that our community needs to do some things to revitalize our downtown. And I don't think that we're talking about spending twenty or twenty five million dollars. But I think that if it costs us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a community. To build a thriving downtown, then I'm willing to do that. And so I I would, and if you disagree, that, fine, I'm just presenting my case. Um, but I would like to take uh some of those items that were put on there that are. Downtown revitalizing, revitalizing the business community of West Chicago. I would like to put some money into that, probably something more along the lines of a half a million dollars. And so that is the other reason why I would be for the sales tax, not just so that we can. Increase taxes and then figure out how to spend it later, but because I think that we as a community. Should invest a half million dollars in revitalizing our downtown. Uh, Alderman Santiago and then Helen. Um, Alderman Helen. Alderman Santiago and Alderman Helen.
Um, yeah, so I uh, I also agree with the sales tax. Uh, but we need to come together and evaluate some of the other options. In order to have a long term plan. And because I don't want to be back here in a year or two and let's raise the taxes again. Because we're short falling because of that reason. And something else not working or something else being shut off by the government. But we need to have something of a long term that we can actually benefit. Or the city benefit from it and not continue to raise taxes. Um, you know, I I know people have spoken openly in their previous session about the cannabis option. Um, you know, we we need to evaluate that as to why we think it's not a good idea, why we think other. Municipalities are getting the revenue from it. You know, it's it's a legal item here to talk about. So I think we need to go ahead and probably consider the revenue potential from that, and again, the long term. Impact that that would have for our community. And because of what's happening, similar to the groceries, right, we're going to other towns to buy groceries. We're going to other towns to buy cannabis, and other cities are receiving that revenue from West Chicagoans. So.
Okay, Alderman Helen.
You know, first of all, in relationship to your statement about improving downtown. Yes, I'm for that sort of thing too, but we need to look at this from the most important things we have to do first. And if we, as revenue comes in, we can move in that direction. But I would no way want it, would vote for any money going towards that without seeing first all the other necessities are met. Uh, as far as uh public works, getting things done, that repairs and this sort of stuff, or the police department and all the other things. Those are high priorities, and I'm not in any way uh dissing the idea of doing things downtown. But let's go from what's most important and work our way, and as money, money becomes available to do those things. I'm all for it, but we can't just go grab seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and. Oh, by the way, we don't have enough for this, we don't have enough for that. And that's just my opinion on it, may not quite go along with what you have to say, but. In the end, I understand what you're going for, but let's look at how we're gonna get there first.
Let me, let me say one other thing, um. Uh, that hasn't really been talked about. Um, cutting costs. Like in this whole discussion, that hasn't really been a. I mean, and we keep, we talked about it a little bit in the finance committee meeting, but in this particular discussion, that hasn't come up. Um, and. I. I I think that. And here's where I think we would agree, Alderman Hallett. Um, that before we ask for any additional money. We need to make sure that we. Are not spending money that should not be the priority. And uh or that we need to look at any cuts that that could be made. Every family, every business has to look at their spending with a. Uh, you know, with a somewhat uh vicious eye to, uh, you know, things that that can be. That can be cut out, and I I think I have like a request for our finance department. If we. I I I think something that should be part of the discussion. Not saying that we should do it, but I think it should be at least part of the discussion. Uh, our largest part of our, of our um. General fund budget is personnel. And so um, looking at that budget. Uh, for the upcoming year. Um, I would, I would like to know, I I'm assuming that you've budgeted in a cost of living increase. And that you've budgeted in based on historical standards, uh merit based. Uh, uh raises. And I'd be interested to know. What would we have to do in terms of our personnel? To. Um, cut four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
So that would be a reduction in staff, just so I'm understanding correctly, what staff would.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm not asking. Specifically about reduction of staff, although that would be another, that would be another possible thing that you could consider. Um, but I know that our, you know. That that's not where I'm going right now. What I'm, what I'm asking is, um. How much increase raises cost of living and merit based increases? Are we counting on for twenty twenty six? And does that approach the number four hundred and twenty five thousand? So that's, I I'm not expecting you to have that number right now, but I think that should be part of the discussion too.
They are beginning salary projections as part of the expenditure component of the budget, so. I'm happy to look closely at those figures, provide that information to you. I would also like to add that we are expecting savings from the early retirement incentive. Um, based on those employees that choose to take advantage of that, we are anticipating savings from. From those.
So I I'm not making a recommendation and saying that, I'm just saying that it, you know, for us to not even ask that question seems. Be responsible to me. I, and and any other cuts that could be made in other areas. I'm assuming that we will be looking at those as well, but I know that that. At least one round of kind of thinking through that has already taken place, and and I don't think that, I think we're. You know, I I I'm open to uh to suggestions on that as well, but uh but I'm not aware of. You know, any really obvious areas where where that could occur and personnel is. Twelve million roughly.
Just like to add that there's no leeway in the union contracts.
Understood.
So we're talking about non-union employees.
Yeah.
Potentially creating some disparagement there, but I'm happy to.
Understood, yeah. Alderman Helen.
I realize you said you're not necessarily looking at reducing personnel. But how many in here would like to be laid off because? You had to get the budget down. I can't see in any aspect unless it came down to no other way. Of ever looking that way. These guys, all these people are hardworking people. And as far as their departments. I've not seen any of them that are wasteful in anything they have. A lot of times you're working with, even like take public works, a lot of times you're working with. Equipment that is kind of getting a little bit old and worn out. Police department the same way. And then, like I said, like you said, you weren't necessarily going that direction. But I I hate to even think of something like that, because we all have to eat in some way. And if we laid off twenty workers, well, then what do we do? They go on unemployment. They go around and guess what? They're struggling to pay their grocery bills. So I would not want to see that happen at this point.
And let me reiterate that I was not recommending that, but I do think that. Uh, for us to not look at every option would be irresponsible, and. I think I can say off the top of my head that eliminating twenty out of our hundred and twenty one employees. Would be devastating to our city. I don't think that would uh uh be something that any of us would contemplate. But, you know, it uh, it's, there there are creative solutions sometimes that can be. That can be looked at, and yes, um, I agree, I can't speak to all, but I think that most of our. Um, city employees are um extremely hardworking and um, I'm not trying to slight anybody, I just. Know that in any organization, you don't have perfection, but um, uh, I have seen firsthand. Um, specifically, you know, our new department, for instance, which came up when we were talking about the need to. Came up when we were talking about the need to add personnel. Well, that department is extremely overworked right now. They're putting in very long hours. And I think that they do need another person. Are there other areas where some cuts could be made either through natural attrition or? Uh, yeah, none of us, no, none of us want to let people go. But none of us want to raise taxes, right? And none of us want to have services cut. So we have to think about all of those options and I am not recommending any of them right now. I'm just saying. Let's have the, let's have the. Let's have the forthrightness to look at all of our options and then make the best decision. Let's turn it over to public um, comments and questions at this point. The long-awaited. Sign-in sheets, uh, Ms. Louise Handel.
I just want to thank whoever was involved, everybody for this process. I think the community has an opportunity here to see. Behind the door of what actually goes on, how much things cost. All the details that go into it, it's not easy. And um. I I hope going forward. That there will be a really huge effort up effort between council and staff. To do the best for everybody in the community. There's going to be really hard decisions to make and I don't think we see that. I also hope that going forward. We don't feel like we have to be watching all the time to make sure, but also that our voice will be heard. When it, when it's um offered. So I just want to thank you all for all the extra, especially staff. Who who's doing something and probably. It's just an added unpaid. Charge. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, we have Mr. Jeff. Uh Johnson.
Yes, I want to thank you all for allowing us to hear what's going on and in the wrestling. Uh, that goes on tonight. I have retired in the last couple of years. After having led a company with a hundred million dollars in revenue and three hundred employees. And so I'm used to having to figure out how to balance revenue and budget. Uh, there are always more needs and wants than can be met. There are always efficiencies that can be found. The thing I want to express to you is. When is enough and enough? To be asking the citizens of this state to keep paying more. I realize you have nothing to do with what happens in Springfield. Or the county or the township. But the fact of the matter. Is we live in a state with the highest tax burden of any state in this country. We're beating California. Over fifty percent of our citizens would move out of this state if they could. Including myself and my wife. We are only here now because of an elderly mother. And we have lived in West Chicago since uh, the late nineties. We love it here. We love our church and community. But the fact of the matter is I can move across state. And have a huge burden. Reduced. So every, it feels like every taxing body always looks at. Well, can we raise a quarter percent here? Can we do a little more on the, the utility tax? Can we do a little bit more here? When does it stop? We're losing citizens in this state. We're losing businesses. Somewhere the line has to be drawn. When we moved up to eight and a half percent sales tax here, that was a big bump. So I'll go do my grocery shopping up in Bloomingdale where it's seven and a half percent. I remember when it was six and a half percent. So. To be honest with you. I don't think we need another park. Leave it at nature here again. But find those reductions instead of adding more to the tax burden. On the citizens. When we as a state, we're at a crisis level. And it needs to stop. So that's just my vote or my input for you. You have a tough. Job, but you do have tough decisions and I applaud you for bringing up expenses. Everybody wants to add, no one wants to subtract. That is just a rule of thumb in any organization that I have served on boards. Or been a part of. But you have to look at those things. In order to make the whole work. And so you may just be losing citizens just because. We're just tired of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Sure. I I I'd like to respond a little bit to that and anybody else that uh, wants to can. I think I would say. Uh, thank you um, for, for, for sharing and uh. Uh, that is, you raised some very important and valid concerns. Uh, which I share. My role as mayor. Is to represent to the best of my ability the roughly twenty-six thousand people who are West Chicago. And. Some may be tired of me saying this, but you know, I, I, I knocked on. Personally, uh, you know, about two thousand doors in the process of. Uh campaigning and. My team knocked on another two thousand, so about four thousand. We have about nine thousand households in West Chicago. My aim was to understand as best as I could what West Chicagoans wanted. And I do recognize that they want. West Chicagoans want taxes controlled. Now, everybody wants something different. We know that, right? And we can't please everybody um, all the time. Uh, we know that as well. But, but the, the three things that came up. The most commonly. In, you know. Those four thousand. Door knockings. Were. Probably in this order. That people from West Chicago wanted a downtown. That they could bring people to. That they could be proud of that kind of brings our community together. Uh, secondly, that they wanted a city hall that served them. And. Thirdly, that they, they wanted, uh, they wanted transparent processes and. And more of a seat at the table. And so my um. My role is, is not to come up with what I want for West Chicago. But I do. I do, and I'm willing to be convinced otherwise. If anyone can show me some data, but I do believe that the, the, the most. The highest priority uh, for West Chicagoans right now. Is uh. Is to revitalize our downtown. And if we want to do that, it is going to cost some money. Now, I think that there are, that this first step is prioritization. And looking at are there areas that we are spending that we don't need to be spending? But I'm gonna say that um, if once we've done that. If we uh. If we need to. Look at increasing revenues by a small amount. I'm willing to do that. And that may not make me popular, but I think that that's what West Chicago wants. And um. Uh, I do. Uh, I do hear you, uh, Mr. Johnson, that it's like, yeah, it's a slippery slope. You ask for a quarter percent and then a quarter percent and a quarter percent. And that is a valid, that is a valid thing to, to definitely keep in mind. But I, I, obviously, there's a whole lot of other issues. Here. And, and I, I am committed to looking at cutting in any way that we can that doesn't. Hamstring our, our city staff, our police. Um, and that doesn't pull services away from West Chicagoans. As, as, as the first step. I just, I'm not willing at this point to say that I would never. Add a quarter percent. Sales tax. That's uh, that's, that's, that's where I lean at the moment. I can be convinced otherwise, especially if there's a huge uprising of people that say, hey, no, you're wrong. We don't want it downtown. We just want. A quarter percent less taxes. Then, then if that is the case, then that's what I will push for. But right now. I'm pushing for this because I think that I'm representing what the people of West Chicago want. That's my statement. Any other uh, comment or questions from our? Community members?
Mr. Riani. Actually, just a couple of observations. I started my work at UPS. One of the rules that I was taught was to identify fires before they happen to be proactive at it. So that was my reasoning for presenting the. Cannabis as a solution. Uh, I think it's a good. Long-term solution that will. Do exactly what you want, Mayor Bovee and. Bring in, if we install three dispensaries, maybe one point five million extra tax dollars that can go to downtown. But one other observation I was noticing, there was a lot of. We need to do this, so we have to spend money. Since you know, I'm a big fan of manpower over money. We don't need to hire somebody to know what the town wants to do. We have you guys. Your constituency will tell you what the town wants to do. Um, that does not need to be tens of thousands of dollars. I don't think that's something that realistically we should spend money on.
Are you referring to the thirty to forty-five thousand for a consultant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also. We would not need to spend money on a consultant to go over the code of ordinances and then tell us what. We need to adjust. You guys just recently adjusted the code of ordinances for one liquor store so that they could have it what they needed. If we need a yoga studio downtown, I'd like to have a yoga studio downtown. Does that make sense to everybody? Yes. Pass an ordinance. Now the ordinance is, we don't need to pay somebody to do that. That should be. Proactive, very easy solutions to things that are. People manpower oriented that are within the realm of everybody's here ability to do. I would just like to see. Kind of a shift in thought process as far as. Can we already do this with the manpower we have? Versus do we need to bring new people in to tell us what we should already know how to do?
Thank you, Mr. Riani, and. What I think I heard is that you're going to be starting a yoga studio downtown.
Yeah, hybrid cannabis.
Yes, Mr. Volzer.
Um, thank you for all the work that you're doing. This was very enlightening. I came just to listen and I'm ending up. Making a few comments, maybe just for clarification. This community park, I honestly wasn't aware of it. We've put six million towards it, another seven million projected. Is that a have-to-do? Or is, is, is that something that, like, have we committed to that thirteen million? We're, we're talking about raising taxes to get seven hundred and fifty. If you divide that by the seven or six million still to go, that's nine years of investment. That we could put towards downtown at a significant amount, much higher than the five hundred thousand you're talking about. So where does that park stand in terms of our commitment? Um, you know, are we legally obliged to spend that money on that park and, and raise the additional seven million? That's one question that I. That I have. And then I would also say that. The, the, the perception of our town. By, you know, getting the, the, the name of the highest taxes in. X county or X location, right, is something we need to think about from a reputational point of view as well. Thank you.
I'll give an initial answer and then if city staff has any more specifics, they can say, but to the first question. As to, you know, where, where, where we are, uh, as has been mentioned before. There is a two million dollar grant that we are online for, so there's, that's not a have-to-do, but. You know, we would lose that if we didn't move forward with things. I think we have committed to some, if I'm not mistaken, to some. Uh, design engineering fees. And I don't know what that for was. Maybe we can get that for post-meeting. Unless you know it off the top of your heads, but I certainly. Okay, that we've already spent or that we are committed to spend?
That we've already spent.
How about committed to spend? Do we know? Okay, we'll check on that. We're a hundred and fifty in. We probably have some contracts for design engineering work that may. Uh, there might be a cost if we were to pull out of, of, of it. We'll check on that and get back to you. But as far as, as far as the um. Uh, as far as the six million dollar fund and so forth. I mean, we are the body that. Can look at those things. And if we hear from the community that they want to do something different. Uh, and we decide that that is what we want to do, then. Then this body can. Can redirect um, that, 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 tho- those, those funds. So in that sense, no, we're not committed to it. I, I'll just say on record that um, you know. I agree. With those that said like we need. Alderman Helen, you said this, we need to, we need to prioritize. We need to think what, what's first, second, third, what's most important right now. I do think the park is a great idea. I don't know. Exactly where it stands in the priorities. I love the idea of the park. Uh, we have zero dedicated soccer fields outside of Cornerstone Lakes. Right now, in a community um, that is a soccer community. And it, it, we're sock, and by soccer community, I mean where the uh, vast majority of people have connections to soccer. Uh, especially on the south side of town where that park would go. Right now, our high school kids, our middle school kids, any day in the summer, you can find them in Winfield. Or other communities where they go to find a place to play soccer. So. That's why I keep pushing the soccer thing. It's not just about soccer. But I love that idea. I am not committed to. The community park has to be the first. Priority or the first step. I believe that if we determine that there's a different priority, then we can put something else first.
One follow-up question for clarification later is, is the two million grant contingent on spending thirteen million? Or is it contingent on a smaller portion of what the city would commit?
Probably a smaller portion, but we will find that out and get a answer. I, I'm assuming that we'll do something on our website um. Coming out of this where we'll answer some of the questions.
So staff is actually working to put together sort of a preliminary community park update, starting for elected officials. And then we're also working to put together a project webpage on. Our website that's going to include more about the history, more about the preliminary designs. And what it could look like over the next couple of years if we were to move ahead with the project. So it's something that's in the works. It's probably going to take us a couple more weeks before we're, have all of that data together. In a way that's going to be prepared and able to be shared for everybody.
And one other thing, spoiler alert, but uh, Monday, uh, our regular city council meeting. City staff uh, has prepared um, an ordinance that would create. A uh, commission. Uh, a new commission that would be focused on downtown revitalization. And so um, to Mr. Riani's point. That would be a commission that would be specifically focused on these issues that we're talking about. And the idea is that it would be a commission that would bring together. Elected leadership, city, city staff, residents, and the business community and stakeholders. Uh, and have one body that is. It, that is. Is completely focused on all the different aspects of downtown revitalization. And then is being also the liaison to all the, these other groups and bodies and organizations who all need to be pulling in the same direction. So that's coming on Monday. Mr. Sebastian, I believe I saw your hand.
A couple of quick things. Well, I'm a part of the reason the city owns the Kerr McGee property is because there's. They have to monitor the water for fifty years and they're limited to infrastructure. So they own it, but they also, you own. Reed Kepler Park too, even though everybody thinks it's the park district. So, I mean, we get that. So what I'd like to address, however, is some of the points that were brought up. Motor fuel tax. Let's tax the trucks, you know, that type of thing. One fines for overweight trucks moving on, you know, drop, going down Hawthorne Lane in the, in this beautiful neighborhood. With a school. They have no business being there. Buying up. Yes, absolutely. The tax. On real estate. That's one of those things that I kind of go, okay, so. Concrete structures of Midwest on, in, in the industrial park builds twenty thousand square foot of office. They have virtually no trucks, but they have a higher assessed value than the manufacturer plant and way more than the distribution center right next door. You know, tax them on the sus valuation, you know, tax them on how many trucks. How about? What's the assessed valuation of a big empty parking lot made of blacktop? That has. Four, five, eight thousand cars that go out six of the, eight at a time on trucks. They're not going to stop. They have hundreds of gallons of fuel. They don't have to stop at our gas stations and pay fuel tax. But they're running our roads. Amazon goes to electric vehicles. They'll no longer pay motor fuel tax, but they're running all over and. The semi trucks that are coming in delivering product to them. They're not here. And so what I fear is we're penalizing the businesses who invest in coming to our city and being our community. Corporate residents. Because we're going to tax their real estate. Because trucks come, but. It's not their trucks doing the damage. Maybe the local excavator, you know, a Hager, some of those guys, again, with good paying. Good skilled jobs, we can tax them. I worry about that because we're, we're taxing our own people that way. The local landscaper. The Hager, tho- the, the Lutons. They'll buy motor fuel tech, they'll buy diesel fuel here, but most of the others are not. They're not going to do that. So you're not, you're going to gain some, you're going to get it for ourselves and, and a very small portion. Of the people that. Are actually damaging our roads. So I really want, I, I like the fact that you're exploring those. But let's not penalize our own people. To, to get to that end. I would also look and say, okay, so, you know, what are the? Minimum weight stamps, you know, you have transfer tax or fuel and, or for garbage and things like that. Okay. They're the ginormous player in that field, by the way. They have multiple facilities. So they can just divert and not dump here. They could dump somewhere else, which would reduce that. I mean, so there's a lot of those component pieces I want to, I want to be really careful of. I do like that idea. To continue to look at it. Advertising and naming. Okay, kind of creative. Boy, we'd be stuck with it. If somebody who we don't like wants to buy it. But you could have some limitations, I guess. But I, I think the city is going a long way. Trying to respond to our, we do have a really great equipment. We have really capable, compassionate people who work for our city, who care about it and watch over for us. We want to support them. The park. You know. I had my opinion back then. Let's just say, I have a snowplow. And the manufacturer sticker is still on it after four years and it sits at the front of the plow. And yet, we decided a sledding hill. For the, what, four days a year that we had to use it? How much are we paying for that? And what space are we using? To create it that might have other options. My final word is this, there used to be a pedestrian underpass. Under those tracks. And that would have connected Pioneer Park, which is amazing with this forty-three acres that eventually that will be there. I mean, what an amazing combination facility. Unfortunately, when the rail spur was removed from the Kerr McGee, they filled it in. Corb engineer says, well, he can't unfill it. Well, how about let's get that underpass? Let's be intentional, strategic about it. Tie those parks together. Now you have the splash pad. Now you have the ball fields. Now you have. The Kerr McGee, now you have the soccer fields and all those things. And, and what a great place. And so. Those are my comments.
Mr. Sebastian, I'm going to turn the tables and ask you one question.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts on a more equitable way to tax the higher usage? People in the manufacturing districts?
Specifically, the tr- the truck traffic for the impact they have on our community?
I think that, yeah, I think that's, that's, that, that was the specific issue that. Has been raised a number of times.
Yeah, I. I would have to give that some thought. There's probably an equitable way to do it. Again, if I use the example of the car park. What do we get out of there? For what? Right? I, it, it, this valuation of blacktop? We're not assessing the values of cars. But they're doing. They're, they're on the streets all the time. And through our industrial park, getting from one highway to another.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would give it some thought, but I appreciate the question.
Fair enough. Anyone else who has a? Thought on that? I'm all ears. Mr. Murphy?
Got a lot of thoughts. Having it sat up here and other places being elected. One thought with the road. Thing that we were just talking about. It can be. Easily regulated to a great degree. By. Putting all the truck traffic onto the county maintained roads. And you're thinking, which ones are maintained by the county? Alice Road, Russ Road. Those are maintained by the county highway department. Baby and Parkway is another one. Maintained by the county highway department. Shuffle those trucks onto those streets, more so than onto city streets, et cetera. Raising your fines, two hundred dollars for going down Hawthorne Lane from fifty. Is in line. Okay. Community park.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? And then?
Yeah.
What do you do with the Grand Lake properties? We have a bunch of.
Those are grandfathered in. You just have to deal with it and. That's just part of the nature of the.
So trucks are allowed only if they're going there?
Yes.
In some way?
Yes, exactly.
All right.
It's a designated truck route for that.
For, but if you're, okay, all right. It's a creative idea.
Okay.
You were going to go on to something else. Thank you.
Community park. Okay. Dave Sebastian brought up a beautiful point. You own Reed Kepler Parkway, you leased it to the park district. Sure, you're going to have to give up some of that community park money if. You lease it to the park district. But you've taken the burden off of twenty-eight thousand residents and spread it out over thirty-five thousand residents. Yes, soccer fields may be a good thing for that site. I've talked to park district board members. They say they made seventy-five thousand dollars off the ball field before the rec center wing, before the arc was built. Annual seventy-five thousand dollars going towards their budget through. Out of town teams coming here. To play tournaments. Out of town people coming into West Chicago to spend their money. At the gas station, at the. Grocery store, picking up some pop, ice, all kinds of stuff.
Don't forget the post-game ice cream.
You mean, we're bringing, we're bringing people from outside into West Chicago to spend money? Is that a good thing? That's a great thing. But you're also spreading the bird now. From. The Kerr McGee site over. And you got to realize Kerr McGee is just not West Chicago's problem. It's Warrenville's problem. It's Naperville's problem. Everybody in the surrounding area that got the free fill. Boy, did they get the free fill. So. Yeah. And we all have one central thing in our hearts, and that's West Chicago. The food tax. That's the most painless, easiest decision there is. Yes, Dan, I understand it'll hurt the very poor. But so will a quarter percent raise in sales tax. They're already paying the. Grocery tax now. So. I'd say I'm in favor of the grocery tax. And if not, just because it's a retailer, it makes sense. And, and I'm being honest, okay?
I got you with that umbrella.
Yeah, the other, yeah, yeah. The other thing you've got to look at is, okay, we're raising a quarter percent. How many people in your audience know what our sales tax is in West Chicago? You talk about raising the diesel fuel tax, six cents a gallon. What are you paying in West Chicago for diesel fuel in tax? And. What are the other communities charging? Because if you're the highest taxed person, all you need to do is go up the street. At Bartlett. Bartlett, Illinois. Half of it to Cook County where the real estate taxes are cheap, but the sales taxes are high. And then you come to DuPage County where the sales tax are cheap and the real estate taxes are higher. A lot of people like living in Cook County, but they shop in DuPage, up in Bartlett. For that reason. Yes, you will have people leave town, go shop elsewhere if it's higher. Some people already do that just because. They like the grocery stores out east or they like the grocery stores out west or they. You, you create a different mindset. You also raise the fuel tax here on diesel or anything else. People will have the Costco mindset. I'm getting my gas at Costco. And I'm not going over to Bloomingdale. I'm going to King County because it's a penny cheaper. The truckers that make their bread and butter. Off of trucking. Six inches lot when you're filling up a hundred fifty gallon tank. So those things all have to be, be taken into consideration. Things that you need to think about as a governing body. Well, if we're running into money problems. A, there are a couple of ways that you can trim staff easily without firing anybody, without laying anybody off. It's called a hiring freeze. You're going to cut your staff by ten to twelve percent. Some through attrition through retirement, some because you're not filling commissions. Yeah, some people will have to work harder. Some things on the list won't get done. But guess what? Your department heads are going to prioritize. Oh. What needs to be done first? What really has to be done? And what can wait? A year, two years, four years. I'll give you an example. There's a little manhole out behind our store. It's a storm drain. It's got a little sinkhole this big, but a little sinkhole this big will turn into this big and suddenly the sewer drops. I called the staff out there. Six months ago, and the kid comes out and looks at it and said, well. How soon you want to fix? You need this right away. I'll put it at the top of the list. I said, no, when you guys get to it. The sinkhole's been filled in with rocks, gravel, and dirt, and it's got weeds growing out of it. So it's not a priority. But you get where I'm going. It's at the bottom of the list because it's not a real priority as this comes. It can be a priority, yes, the sinkhole gets bigger, but. That's. My job to monitor it and say, hey, I got a real problem. My semi can't get in because it's going to fall in the sinkhole. But you get it. You have to balance things. It's easiest to sit out here and take pot shots, second-guess you, do, do all the twisting and everything else. It's a lot tougher to make the decisions. There are other ways you can also reduce staff. And I believe I heard a little bit tonight. Early retirement. Voluntary early retirement with an incentive. I was Forest Preserve Commissioner my first year on this. At the Forest Preserve, we took a staff of. Two hundred and forty-seven people and trimmed it down to a hundred and twenty-eight in two months' time. Voluntary early retirement. It doesn't sound like much, but when you spread out ten years of not paying a hundred people. Ten years of not paying health benefits. It's. Millions upon millions of dollar savings. And tell them that the forest preserve has to shut down. Did the forest preserve crash and burn? No. You can do the same thing here. Just through different things like hiring freezes. Early retirement, et cetera, but also prioritizing the jobs that have to be filled, have to be done on a daily basis. There was a time when we were looking at outsourcing. The roads. And I even told the mayor at the time, don't do it. He said, why? I said. You've got to have Johnny there on the day that it snows, six inches to plow the streets. And I said, if you outsource it. He's out for the highest bidder. You get it. You understand it. You're here to take care of your residents. You're here to take care of the needs of the cities. Everybody says, we got to get downtown rolling. We got to get downtown rolling. We got to have a beautiful downtown. I've heard that sixty years. I could make, I could retire on the amount of consultants we hired to study this problem. And we all know some of the basic things. Rooftops. Disposable incomes. And those are the things that, we're getting there. But it's also. A changing environment, a changing town. I remember one person said to me, well, you guys have a lot of his thanks. I said, wake up. This is the next generation coming to your town. It's just like the Irish back in the twenties and thirties. And I'm an Irishman. So. It's just a changing demographic and you have to deal with it. And it's part of life. They're your neighbors. I'm your neighbor. We're all good people. But let's work together, make it a great town. I know you guys can. It already is a great town. We're just going to even make it even better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, well. I, I think we've heard some really good feedback tonight and. We want you to know that this is not just checking a box for us. I think that's obvious at this point. We've been here for how long?
Three hours.
Yeah. It's not just, okay, we heard, we list, we checked the box of listening to the community now. Now we're going to do whatever we want to do. We, we really want to know what you guys think. And you guys who came out here, I don't know, probably most of you are. Budget nerds or geeks, or I'm not sure where nerd or geek applies. Numbers, numbers geeks. But you get to represent the other twenty-five thousand eight hundred and however many people. Are in West Chicago. We do try to. Utilize as many different ways as we can to listen to the community, but thank you for coming out and you guys represented the rest of your community tonight. Those who are watching online, thank you for being here. You can also submit comments or questions. In written form as well. What, what would be the best way for people to do that? To email us?
Yes, we have.
You can email me. Email me, dbovi@westchicago.org. Okay, and I'll get it to the right source.
Correction, twenty-five thousand six hundred population issue. As mayor, you should know that.
Alderman, how it keeps me honest. Closing thoughts, city councils? Alderman Rich Ferguson.
Yes, since many of our new members on this body have brought up recreational cannabis on the retail level. We did talk about that in twenty nineteen. And I'm hoping, without objection, as we like to say. That staff could pull those documents for us since it's not in the last two years. That staff could pull those documents for us since it's not in the last two years. Um, pulling ordinance, we ended up adopting all the meeting minutes from all the discussion. We did have. A lot of public engagement at that time. And I think it'd be good to revisit that and read the concerns from then and then decide if we want to bring it forward again.
Um, city staff, can you um pull those and maybe uh? Email those. Uh, to the council members and maybe in some way. At the same time. Put it, make it available to the public with. With the other answers that we. Put out there. Alderman, we're on it.
Was there a advisory referendum at that time?
I believe there was.
Yes, I think that would be helpful also.
I don't remember the exact numbers, but.
Yeah.
The nays had it.
Right, yeah.
Um. But by the way, this is just a perfect little um. Point to mention, like, I I really wanted to have some sort of a, what I've been calling, for lack of a better term, a. Uh, rapid referendum system where we could put stuff out to the community and just get a a kind of a. A pulse of what people think, and this is the the perfect kind of thing that I would love to be able to send that out. And by all means, let's pull that that advisory referendum, but this is why I would like to spend ten thousand dollars on the. Um, on the 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 app or the 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 system that would give us the ability to. Send out polling like this to our community and get um. Get quantitative data that we can use. Any other closing thoughts? Okay, so we did not decide anything tonight, and that was not the goal. Um, I think, uh. I think we had some good discussion. I think we all heard some things that hopefully will make us think differently. Um, uh, because. Every one of us, none, none of us has a uh monopoly on. Uh, on the the on the the correct. Um, decisions, uh. And the correct thinking on these things. Uh, I heard some things that made me think twice about some things that I had thought. Um, and that's, that was the purpose. Uh, going forward, we will. Because that is our duty as. Former Alderman Murphy reminded us to make those decisions, even when it's hard, we will do our best. To try to represent the people that elected us in making these decisions. But I want to just, I want to just applaud you as a community, uh, and as a a council that I think. Um. Uh, I think that the spirit with which everyone communicated tonight really did. Demonstrate uh a reality of of. The awareness that we are all in this together as as West Chicagoans, and I want to applaud that and say, good job. So, um. Uh, all of us have probably been part of meetings that have gotten heated and have, uh, you know, gone off the rails or whatever. These are topics that we care about, that all of us care about this a lot. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here for three hours. So, good job. Thank you for caring. And um with that, I would. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman, help.
I make the motion to adjourn, please.
Second from Alderman Stout. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for being here.